And welcome to Elizabeth Township Mining Commission meeting. This is July 17th, 2019. It is now 7:00 PM, but everyone please see it. I'm glad you're here.
I'm glad you're here. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next is Old Tops.
Mr. King, present.
Mr. Dukey, present.
Ms. Fossett, present.
Mr. Medsito, here.
Mr. Foyle, present.
Alternate Mr. Stern, present. Mr. Med, Solicitor of the Commissary, here. Ms. Bennett, here.
All right. I see that we have next is addressing the, John, I think we haven't got that yet, the citizens' dressing. We spoke about this back in, I believe, the April meeting about the dressing, any of the three minutes after we were done? Do you recall that, Matt?
We did, however, I think with this condition of use, you may want to get that at least at, well, I guess as long as it's before you vote. I mean, they can do the hesitation that gets in the public.
The only reason is because people wanted to respond after the presentation.
After the presentation, right. As long as the public has a chance to address the order.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I just felt that might be better if anyone asked any concerns, questions they could do at that point. So, we're going to reserve that to the end of their presentation. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Tom Huntley, do you have a presentation to come up?
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you again. Blaine Lucas from Bass Callan on behalf of Huntley &amp; Huntley Energy Exploration. Just to kind of give you some background of those that you're familiar with, previously the township board commissioners had a recommendation of the planning commission approved the Apollo B well pad. We've done our five wells approved in 2017, two in 2018. The path has been built, the first three wells have been drilled, and the current schedule is that they'll be fracked sometime in August. You also have the Plutus well pad, eight wells for that were approved back in late 2018. That pad has been built, two of the three wells, I believe, have been drilled, and the third one is in the process right now. The frac schedule for that is late August or early September. With respect to Apollo, the original water sourcing plan was that there was either going to be trucking or piping to the site with an above-ground storage tank, all probably located there. The planning commission was also aware, in an effort to reduce truck traffic, eliminate most of, quite frankly, HACs submitted here, eventually conditional uses were approved for what's called the Gailey CDO water withdrawal and a tank system that would have pulled water out of the Yawk and supplied a lot, most of the fresh water for hydraulic fracturing to both of those beds. However, a lot of moving parts on that project. There's several approvals that HACs is still waiting for, and at this point, it's looking very problematical whether that system can be approved in place by the time to meet the upcoming hydraulic frac time schedule. So, we devised an alternative plan that doesn't eliminate all truck traffic, but hopefully reduces it significantly. That will involve, and Jennifer Hoplin here momentarily will explain in a little more detail, trucking water up Nichols Hill Road to the Apollo well pad, which is something that Apollo's been approved to begin with, placing that water in an above-ground storage tank there to first service the hydraulic fracturing needs for the Apollo wells, those three that are ready to be fracked, but then allow for piping of water from that AST up to an above-ground storage tank to be placed on the Plutus pad, and water will be piped to there. You know, while, in our view, use of ASDs on both sites is always something that was anticipated, we are basically using Apollo as a source for trucking water to service Plutus, so out of an abundance of caution, we apply, ask for conditional use to allow for that system to proceed. Here tonight, Jennifer Hoplin, here at the man met from some of the previous meetings. She's the vice president of EHMS and regulatory for HACs. She'll give a quick overview. This will not be a long presentation at all. Josh Magery from CDC is also here in case any site questions come up. And we also have here tonight Luann Daishu, who is new general counsel for HACs. She's here mostly as a participant to see how these functions go, but I wanted to alert everybody that she was here too. So, no further ado, for you to come up and just walk through, you know, what has been approved, what the previous trucking route was, and how, while not as preferable as the CDO Gailey system that we're still hoping eventually get approved and in operation, that this will help reduce trucking. And so, we have four of you up on the wall. Did the lights a little bit?
Yeah, I was going to say, John, do you have a light? Sorry. Do you have a pointer, John? Can you take a second?
We also have the hard copy board here. So, Jennifer, you just kind of want to walk through what's drawing, what would be one, explain what was planned and present, and how people would want to modify that.
Sure. So, I wanted to kind of remind everybody of what our approved truck route is. You guys have already previously approved these routes, but basically, the idea is that under, for this conditional use, if we can't get Gailey approved, yeah, let me use this one. If we can't get Gailey approved or built in time, this is, this is the plan. So, basically, we would be taking trucks up this route, which was the previous, previously approved route, and up our Lees Road to Apollo. So, this is the Apollo location. They're being AST on this Apollo location. And then, we'd be able to avoid this route up to, up to the Plutus route. So, right now, you know, this is kind of approved route to Plutus, this whole green area. This is our secondary route that we wouldn't contemplate using for, for water trucking. So, the idea here is that we would have above-ground storage tanks, freshwater only, on both locations, one here on Apollo, and then one here on Plutus. So, we would be trucking the water to the Apollo location and then utilizing our, an above-ground temporary water line that was, that follows our Plutus to Apollo pipeline to pipe the water then to the Plutus location.
So, that pipeline, that would all be within the previously approved?
Yeah, that's right. So, this whole, this whole area right here is our, is our approved right-of-way for our pipeline and for our temporary water line.
Pipeline, yeah.
The, the pipeline is currently being built. So, most of it's, most of it's in the ground. And, and we do have all of our DEP-approved requirements for, for that. So, the idea for this, obviously, is to eliminate the majority of the, of the truck traffic for this last leg from Apollo to Plutus. And the reason that we're, that we want to do that is because of the number of houses along this route. If you look at it, there are actually 45 houses along this route as opposed to 15 throughout this entire length. So, it would minimize any impact from trucking to the local residents.
Do you want us to say our questions for after or can we pick us?
I'm, I'm okay with you asking questions throughout. Yeah, sure, Sandy.
The above-ground pipeline, it's temporary.
Temporary, that's right.
We don't have definition for temporary, but, and it's above-ground, and our ordinance says everything is below-ground. Are we going to be, can you do something?
I don't think your ordinance for pipeline says anything, like, you don't, you don't have a, I don't think you have a, a pipeline ordinance.
Okay.
So, for this, it would be a temporary pipeline above-ground, and the, the, the duration would be for the, for the Plutus frac.
And since it's temporary, though, it'll be taken down?
That's correct.
Once the conversation ever?
Oh, yeah, yeah. If they, and honestly, if, if the lean is, if the withdrawal from the Yawk that we want to use is, is in service, then this won't be built. So, the temporary pipeline won't be there.
And it won't be problem in winter, if it would get into the winter months?
No.
Some of this water's flowing.
Mm-hmm, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's only all fresh water.
Yeah, it's all fresh water. And, and DEP, you know, controls the operations related to that.
And the fresh water is coming in by truck. Where are we getting that fresh water from? Like, will each truckload be checked for?
Yeah. So, so they actually have to be certified freshwater, and it's from a withdrawal point that it's owned by a third party.
Now, it turns to Jennifer to steal the background of the size of the nature of the tanks.
Right. So, the size for the AST, above-ground storage tank AST, that we're going to have on both of these sites is about the same as you guys approved for CDO or recommended for approval for our CDO pad, so it won't be any bigger than that. That was about two, 2.4 million gallons, 190 feet in diameter, and about 12 foot high with two foot of report. So, whenever you take into account the two foot of report, it's a little less than 2 million gallons.
And both these sites have sound walls that are higher?
They, yeah, they, the Plutus will have 32 feet sound walls, or has 32 feet sound walls, and Apollo, for the most part, is, is 240.
Are the ASTs temporary?
Yes. Yeah, they'll be taken down. They're kind of like, like envision giant above-ground swimming pools. That's kind of what they look like.
Very giant, you say?
Very giant.
That's my last thing on this one is, I know it's pretty picky, but Nichols Hill is labeled as Skellet Hill?
Okay.
I mean.
I, I don't know.
It seems like maybe someone didn't look it over and fall back to when we were permitting the Apollo well pad that was labeled the Titan well pad. I know it's a picky little thing, but I feel like sometimes we're not getting a lot of attention here at least the township, we're just.
You guys get plenty of attention, Sandy, so I totally disagree with that.
It's Skellet Hill, definitely not Nichols Hill.
Absolutely agree.
In addition to the sound walls around the paths themselves, there's another sound wall at the, on the northern side of the access road for Apollo where it curves into Nichols Hill, is that right?
Yeah, we, we installed an additional sound wall basically on this side of our, of our access road at Apollo. There's a house that's basically right at the end of our access road, so we wanted to make sure they were, you know, blocked from sound and blocked from light that, that trucks may have coming into that, into that access road.
John, jump up to, to see what the private drawing is.
Can I ask a question? I apologize, I was talking about Sandy's talk, so I didn't get it. So, if I repeat, I apologize. These are temporary?
Correct.
Correct. What's your definition of temporary?
So, they'll be there, so Apollo will be there to serve the Apollo frac time, so that'll be about a month, and then it'll also be there to serve the Plutus frac time, which is about a month. So, altogether, you're talking probably two and a half months.
Okay. You said now it's in the courts for the compensation. Do you feel there's going to be any issues, or do you feel it's going to be a relatively, or you just don't know?
I, I, I.
Maybe that's the attorney's question.
There's no way.
There's no.
We can't second.
If this becomes permanent, will these tanks be?
Oh, so, so if, like, if basically you're asking, Kathy, if, if we can't use the lean at all, like, what happens to the, during our next frac? Is that what you're asking?
Well, those tanks that are temporary, will they then, and then once they become permanent, are they going to be secured up?
So, they won't be permanent at all. So, even, right, so even if, even if the lean doesn't, never, never comes to fruition, right? Even if it's never operational, we would only have those up while we're fracking. So, you know, for next year, when we come back to do our next set of wells, right, we would set those up again and use them to frac again for, but they wouldn't be up.
You won't need all these trucks coming in with water?
Pardon?
Correct?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
What was the question?
I know the biggest concern was truck traffic.
Yeah.
Because of water. I want to take these tanks down, we won't need them, right?
So, we won't, so it'll only be trucking during the frac?
When do you plan on fracking the next little?
Next year.
What did you say, you were starting to question?
How many sequences do you plan on having?
So, right now, we have a total of 15 wells approved from Elizabeth Township total. We've got three that have been drilled and are waiting on completions at Apollo. We've got three that are being drilled on Plutus and will be completed this year. Next year, right now, our plan calls for three on each of those locations, and then I don't believe we're back for a couple of years after that, so.
So, is this, is this application good for reinstallation of these things every time they frac, or is this only one time? The intent is to, to set we need it going forward any time.
It would be for the use.
For Apollo or Plutus. Again, our hope is that Gailey CDO are approved, there won't be any need to see.
Now, I'm just, I, that was up to, just, that might happen down the road.
But, it's a Jennifer, this is up here. I mean, if frac is completed in August and September this year, is that you approve of that?
Yes, after, so after the, this frac, so after the frac for Plutus is completed, then part of our DEMO would be taken down, the, the above-ground storage tanks, both of them. And then, when we come back, if we need them again next year, then they'd be put back up.
They're still doing the pipelines underground too, though.
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct?
Yeah, that's right.
So, you're still doing the air load, the gas and the water together, as we speak?
For.
Are you ready for that or not?
Yeah, we had, we had some difficulties with DEP getting things through because they switched their permitting requirements midway through, so right now, our plan is above-ground, but the intent is to make them underground.
All right, thank you. What happens to PA water? Is there, do we never go any further with that fine water from PA and bringing it?
So, at this point, at this point, we wouldn't, so you're talking about the PA plan that we had for Apollo originally, so at this point, we don't have the time to be able to build that line.
Okay. And my last question, and I think someone else kind of hit on this, money, we're, it's conditional use, 1,050, and escrow, 1,200, should it be a different one for Apollo from Blaha from the pipeline?
I don't, I don't want that, like.
Can we review this?
I think what you're trying to say is, you mind Apollo B and Plutus conditional use in the one, I paid for the one.
Oh.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Where she thought you should pay for Apollo B one, Plutus B one. Because they were permitted under different ordinances at different times.
Well, we just, we view this as an integrated system, and that's why we did it the way we did it. The, I mean, our view, we, we don't need to be here if we want to put an AST on either of these well pads, because that was a vision, it was a possibility. It's only because we thought, because we're going to be actually using Apollo as a connector up to.
So, how do the water tanks?
So, it's water, I mean, it's really, well, it's really the use of the AST at Apollo to service Plutus, why, and it's an integrated system, and that's why Apollo.
Do you understand what you're saying, Sandy?
So, I, I was there for that. I used to. So, basically, if we wanted to truck straight to Apollo and use water at Apollo and truck straight to Plutus and use water at, at Plutus, then we wouldn't need to be here, but we're trying to mitigate the traffic through that, through that area to be able to.
They approved it based on them having a pipeline going to Plutus?
Say that again.
Did we make the recommendation to approve it based on them having a pipeline going to Plutus at that point in time?
Yeah, the pipeline was previously approved already.
Yeah.
And the AST. The ASTs were contemplated at that time as well.
Right, but it was approved because there was going to be no truck traffic, because they were going to have an intake from the Yawk.
Right.
It was approved based on that, so.
Well, you would have, you would have, you would then have used it the reverse way.
Yes, that's right.
So, they would have pumped it from the Yawk to Plutus.
But for her to say that we would just truck it right now, that's not the way.
We had an approved truck route.
They could.
We have an approved truck route.
Yeah, they do.
Well, you do have an approved truck route, but this Plutus well pad was approved based on the fact that you have a water source being piped to that Plutus well.
That's why we said that.
I think it's always was our hope to be able to do that, but the, I mean, the fact is that there was an approved truck route for both Apollo and Plutus.
Well, you needed an approved truck route just to get your equipment.
Well, this was for water, because the, the heavy stuff was coming in from the other direction. So, we're happy to continue to answer questions. There were just one, one of the Apollo plans that we wanted to point out. This is the, actually, one of the exhibits from Apollo, which shows the setbacks for the Apollo site can, maybe just cut to short, the, the, the requirement under your ordinance now is that, is that the well, the tanks themselves be at least 300 feet away from the closest effective structure. Just looking at the old exhibits, you see the tanks are obviously in the well pad themselves and the closest home. I don't think, well, in the case of Apollo, that, that purple line is 750 feet from the edge of the well pad. So, obviously, we're well, we meet the setback requirements by double or by less than half that relates to Apollo. And John, if you could then just switch to Plutus, mark that.
I have another question, I'm looking for that. On December 17th, 2018, recently, we knew you're approved in our minutes from the township. It says there was an motion to approve or deny the conditional use for Huntley &amp; Huntley provisional wellheads at the Apollo B site, and the engineer, Trilla, recommended this approved based on same conditions as the original Apollo B approval application. So, the original one was back from the 2012, and it said these impoundments can only be industrial area, this, I understand, went on a well pad. There's an impoundment.
So, you changed your ordinance since then?
Twice.
And so, now freshwater impoundments are, are.
No, well, this was 2018.
Well, that's why we're back here too, Sandy, so that we.
Well, that was only a post- ordinance, that wasn't adopted until 2019.
Yeah.
At which point, it made it clear that freshwater impoundments were allowed as conditional use in all zoning districts. And if you consider the Apollo AST as freshwater impoundment, standalone one as opposed to just one servicing Apollo, or, you know.
Because you're combining them, is what you're saying.
Right. Your current ordinance allows that, and the ordinance that was in existence pre-2019 did not address, you know, centralized impoundments. It was only in that proposed ordinance that was ever adopted, that's what we mean. The bottom line is currently, it is allowed, and we sort of acknowledge that subsequent approval of the additional wells on Apollo was subject to the same conditions that the original one was with the adjustment on the Hall route that was just agreed to within consent of the court. Just looking briefly now at Plutus, it required the setback issues, same issue there, that purple line showing 750 feet setback from the edge of the well pad.
What are we?
This one's the best.
On a call. Let's call the question.
Call property.
So, just a second.
It, it, it's the only quote protected structure within seven, even within 750 feet of the Hall buildings themselves, so no third parties are within 750 feet. Again, the wire was 300, so we're way under what the, the setback requirement is there. But that's really all we have. Again, it's not our preferred route, we're still pursuing aggressively CDO and Gailey, but given the scheduled frac commitments and the like to that frac schedule, you know, we need to have something else in place, and the goal here is to particularly minimize the traffic, the impact on those 45 houses that are between Apollo B and CDO, or between the two.
I have a question now. On this drawing, it says drains to UNT to Bellic's Run off the, over there.
Is that just, is that a water runoff from the actual, actual runoff of the land, or is that, you know, this tank?
So, no, it's not the tank. So, that's the, that's the drainage area for the entire location. So, whenever you have like an ESCP and you're looking at stormwater calculations from a, a site, you have to identify nearby, nearby water features. So, there's the, the drainage from, there's no drainage from the tank.
So, this is just runoff, you're saying it's not an upstream, right?
That's right. And all, remember, all of our locations are, you know, permitted for stormwater from, from DEP, and so their design is a discharge location.
Can I do, they propose to put these tanks in place? Is it after the commissioners, or what, how long would it take, about time to get the tanks to have to put up, in place and have all the water put down?
So.
Just approximation.
So, we're hoping to have all of our, all of our approvals in place before our, our Plutus, our Plutus frac.
Okay.
And the truck, I think, the actual time to install.
Oh, they go up pretty quick, yeah. They live in a couple of days.
Oh.
How many trucks does it take to fill them, and then how long is that?
8,000 gallons of truck.
Yeah, so the, the thought process, and John, I don't know if you want to go back to the Apollo one, and I can kind of show you what the, the plan is for manifolding and, and what the trucks will, will do.
That tank is put down.
So, if you want to kind of zoom in to where the access road is.
It's been talking about that in a couple of weeks for them to fill up that tank?
Oh, no, so we'll have, we'll have, we'll have trucks running throughout, throughout, throughout the time, right? Right? Like, it's not going to take a couple of weeks to, to fill up, fill up the tanks. What we're going to do is, here's our access road, so what we would do is we would basically have kind of a manifold system throughout here so that trucks can come up off the road, unload their water load, and then turn around on our pad and come back down, and then go back and pick up, you know, pick up additional water loads.
What they're going to have to do, they're going to have to load the tank, and then they're going to get enough water to start, and then they're going to have to keep feeding the tank as they draw it down.
That's right.
So, those, those trucks will be running probably 24/7 until they get balance of traffic.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, is anyone out? So, let me see if I understand. So, our basic reason for approval or disapproval is basically allowing these tanks to be on the property sites, is my correct, Liz?
And to be able to, to be able.
Because I'll be honest with you.
It's really not the top of the tanks to allow.
I'm asking here in the book.
What we're requesting is conditional use to essentially allow the tanks to be on Apollo to service Plutus. That's the reason.
You're only having one.
But it's only Plutus two to service Apollo.
One, I mean, Apollo.
It's, it's Apollo to service the, yes, yes.
So, basically, you're only having one tank that's going to be on the Apollo site, is my correct on that?
There's going to be, so there's going to be one tank on Apollo, and then there's going to be one tank on Plutus.
Okay, so there's actually two.
That's right.
So, there will be two, one on each site.
Yeah, there will be one. The reason we believe we have to be here for conditional use.
So, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
We're using the tank on Apollo that all is.
That's what I'm saying. So, basically, we're, you're asking a basic approval on those two tanks, is my correct?
To be able to pipe water from Apollo to use at Plutus.
Right, you're just going to have two tanks.
That's exactly right, yes.
And this is where it will happen, is it'll be used first to service Apollo.
Correct.
Because, yeah, because Apollo B is first to be, to be fracked, so. I think you said partnership began next month?
At Apollo, yeah, and since we've, had already contemplated our approval previously to use a tank. And since we've already, had already contemplated our approval previously to use a tanks on Apollo, we don't need the approval to use it at Apollo. We just need it, the approval to use it at Plutus.
What's the holdup for this?
So there are a couple of different things. One is that our conditional use approval was appealed, our approval from you guys. One is that DPP has, we have a modification into DPP for our CTO location to put the tank on there. And they haven't acted on it yet, it's been in for them for three months.
This is actually a modification, it's shrink the size.
It's shrink the size. And then we also have an issue with, we've got a National Park Service approval for the easement and right-of-way agreement, which Protect ET is, is supposed to be.
That process, we've been in the approval process that for some time now.
So why are you still waiting for it?
Well, we're still waiting for that.
Well, so you're still waiting on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, the DCNR has told us we can, we had postponed, which is why we had started construction for there. And then.
I've seen it, they're working that with Beaton and other.
Yeah. And then Protect ET.
What's your timeframe on that?
As long as we can, as long as we can construct it, it would be, I want to, I want to use it for, for Apollo.
And who is the she is obviously not going to have Apollo on it.
No, as long as, as long as we don't get held up in the court system, basically, the lien will, from our construction standpoint, will be done in August. But if we get held up in courts.
So if, if for some reason the pump station, Gailey, whatever, can't, doesn't go through. Because we, we approved this on the pump station being there. So if it never goes.
Well, no, you, you approved the, I mean, you approved the pump station, yes, absolutely. You approved the CTO tank pad, you approved the Plutus location, and you approved the Apollo location. You recommended it for.
Yeah, we recommended approval because that would get trucks off the road. But what happens if that doesn't go through and it's all trucks? Maybe we need to.
No, no, I don't think so. Because honestly, our, our locations met all of the ordinance requirements regardless of, of whether water was being.
Plutus was approved late last year. It was approved subject to the same Hall route that was, that was agreed to for Apollo. The CTO Gailey applications were months away from being filed at that point. So while certainly there was a lien in everyone's eye to eventually be able to do that, that was not something that was, that we could rely on.
I have a question about an AST for Apollo. Was an AST contemplated for Apollo? I, I can't recall, I cannot.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's testimony from Anthony Millard to that fact. It's in the transcript.
Do you recall, Nancy talked about that?
I didn't see that.
Ask you.
It was, it may have been contemplated, I don't recall it ever being shown. It was, it, the testimony before the Board of Commissioners for the first go-round. I don't know whether it was mentioned here, because you don't have, or make the transcripts of your, your proceedings, but it definitely was specified to be in the initial hearing with, on, on the Apollo wells.
That's actually how we manage all of our fracs at all of our other locations.
I mean, that's the only, that's why we went, ended up having to appeal and a resolution with the township precisely because the township wanted to pull as much of the truck traffic off the road as they could. And so we had, because the original route was to have everything come in from this direction and the resolution with, with the township was only, you know, any big rig movements that could come up Nichols Hill would come this direction, but that all the other truck traffic, the water truck traffic could come across the river and up. I mean, that, that was clearly contemplated at that point.
Yeah, that truck route, I recall, I guess the issue, the issue that we need to clarify, I think, is that this, even the, even the AST at Plutus is going to be in a different location than CTO, right? CTO was the pump route.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So you're asking for a new conditional use for a pad and tank, I assume, right? Because you're going to have a pad, it's just like CTO, right? CTO was a pad, tank pad and a tank.
So it was to add an additional structure on existing pads.
Yeah, CTO standalone tank pad to service other areas. The, the operationally, you need a water tank on your drilling location or grab location or you need a separate tank pad or impoundment to serve that location.
Well, that's what, that's what CTO was for, right? To service Plutus.
That's right. And so right, right now, we've got the issue with DPP. And that, that we haven't been able to finalize building CTO because we have a modification in the DPP that they haven't acted on for three months.
Excuse me, is it because of the size of CTO that the DPP is.
No, no, we actually, we, we are actually.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry.
We're going to have questions after. I want to lose your place.
It's about the spot that's in there and they don't have yet.
I'm sorry. No, it's okay. You don't need to be happy, I want to answer questions.
There was no new pad, am I correct?
Well, the, the CTO pad was originally supposed to be the primary source of water to fill both the pads.
And we're, and we're currently building it.
And so, and, and CTO was supposed to come over to Apollo and to Plutus.
That's correct.
With a, with a freshwater intake.
That's correct.
Okay, now, we don't know what's going on with the freshwater intake. We don't know if they're, are you building CTO now or not?
So Bill, CTO was almost, is almost entirely built. We're ready for the modification, yeah. So right now, the issue is we have kind of soil stockpiles that we need to put into a berm. And that's what DPP needs to approve.
For containment, right?
Uh, no, so berms aren't containment. That would just be where the soils, the soil stockpile is, but it's not currently contemplated in our plans. When we built CTO, the amount of topsoil was more than we thought it was going to be. So we need to find an additional place for that topsoil. So we were reducing the side of the pad and then putting a berm around it to utilize that additional topsoil. And DPP needs to approve that.
Is that a requirement back in, what's that requirement?
Well, D, it, it would be outside of our DPP approval.
So, so the difference being, sorry, Dave, the difference being that, that what CTO needed the standalone pad because it was a standalone structure.
That's a good structure.
And these are temporary structures, which is going to go on tank pad.
That's exactly right, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just make it dry.
In essence, you're right as far as the application seems, that you're now with two, two additional applications, which should be on separate pads in the separate sites, number one. Number two.
Because the line wasn't, and I, I, I mean, I could ask you, I mean, I imagine you would modify this. If the board put that condition on, it'd be found as a separate allocation, I assume you would modify.
I'm sure they're worried about the couple thousand.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, we'll, we'll give you the additional application, Dan, that's what you want.
Yeah. That's the minimal thing as well. But my, I guess my concern is, okay, we gave you the authorization on the freshwater intake and that seemed good crap. And, and now we got this, but you're actually going to be.
The freshwater intake?
Well, coming from, yeah, from the lien.
We're still actively building that. I'm hopeful to have that in place.
But you still don't have all the approvals to build that. And do you have all the jurisdictional approvals to add these tanks to the pad?
Yes. So you don't actually need approval from DPP. They just contemplate that as part of their operations because it's part of normal operations.
Yeah, DPP has, I've been on a lot of tank paths, I've never seen portable tanks on, on the pad.
Oh, we use them all the time. The entire oil and gas, all, all oil and gas companies use them.
Jennifer, if you want, David, you can always contact him and he'll take you up to the site.
Yes.
Being built or others don't see it.
We're happy to take you out.
I've seen it before, the majority of the pads that I've been on don't have the ASTs for water. Again, they usually have a source supply of water, like they were supposed to have on Gailey.
Well, if they're not, if they, if they don't have an AST on site, then they're trucking water.
Right, they are doing a lot of trucking.
All our donors trying to prevent all the truck traffic that happens there and going up. You're reducing.
Well, yeah, they're, they're preventing the truck traffic along Fallon Timber, but there's going to be substantial amount of truck traffic on Nichols Hill.
That's correct.
And here's the, here's the thing, if they, if you do that, why spend the money to get the freshwater done, done, uh, the off? Because you can, you can remodel those tanks again to frac a couple more wells, especially when you're only going to frac three more wells the next round.
No, no, we've got three on each side at least. So, but, but I can, I can address that.
Yeah, I mean, you're going from, you're going from 16 at one time.
Financially, financially, it, it makes way more sense to have that freshwater withdrawal than to truck. So there's that. We don't like trucking from an operational perspective. It's our biggest risk. And so we way prefer to, to pipe water as opposed to trucking water. So those two, those two issues are really important.
And the water was, like, you're paying someone.
We're paying for it, yeah.
And the water was drawn, that we had to invest in the infrastructure, but that water you want to pay incrementally for a gallon with your pump station, but so.
Oh, more than that. The entire project is.
I, the bottom line is there was massive financial incentives and also safety.
Right, and from us, you know, I'm thinking, I'm the environmental health, safety and regulatory person, right? Like, safety is my main priority. Trucks are our biggest safety concern.
And what permits you to act on Gailey?
So we have, we have all of our permits for Gailey. We're, we're constructing the lien right now. So right now, it's really just court issues. It's legal issues. We had a condition, our conditional use approval from the commissioners was appealed. And we have, if Blake and, Blake can stop me if he wants to talk about a easement agreement issue that we have.
Oh, you mean the, the three issues are, like Gailey, conditional use appeal, the, quite frankly, Protect Elizabeth and Fair Shake Environmental have been opposing our efforts to get the National Park Service approval. They've also been opposing, insisted that the court approval was needed by some of the township to proceed with the right way. Not, these are permitting issues, so we're saying, but that's just a level we're facing. That opposition on several fronts to implementing Gailey and CTO, so we're planning. So you're, two years down the road from the decision, one way or another. Well, I don't know. It's a lot more expedited than that. It was quickly becoming apparent, it's going to be on the horizon of August and sometime. It'll be like, oh, Gailey House Network, apparently for UMC, this is possible.
Okay, I'm still confused. So I know you're trying to link all three of these things at once. But from your narrative, it says the conditional use approvals for the Plutus site were previously granted to this township on December 17th, 2018, which is what I read from, where it says approved based on same conditions as the original Apollo B application. And also on April 15th, 2019, was simply for the operation of the AST and CTO tank pad. So those are two different things. I really think impoundments way back on the original application for Apollo B, at that time, all impoundments had to be industrial. I mean, that's why I thought the tank pad from Plutus feeding Blaha took care of that because there wouldn't be an AST, there wouldn't be an impoundment. Because you do call the impoundments.
So I think I've already, I think I've already, I think I've already addressed this. But, but I'll, 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 I'll explain it again. So the reason that we had to get approval for the AST on the tank pad, because CTO is a standalone tank pad, we're not drilling there. So that's, that's the, the tank pad, the impoundment.
My concern is Blaha.
Plutus.
No, I'm talking Blaha, you're leaving a steel on the Blaha.
Apollo, Apollo.
Yes, yes.
Your, your, isn't, okay.
So that's not a standalone location. So that one just serves Apollo. It's not, it's not an impoundment that serves multiple locations.
So it won't be sending water through this brown pipeline to.
That's actually not true.
What?
Because you are, you are serving Plutus.
But that's why we're here. That's why we're here.
Until we decided to try to, you know, interface these two together, we really didn't need to be back before the township because of the fact that that tank on Apollo, Blaha, is being utilized for purposes other than just servicing Apollo, I think it will serve as Plutus, that we felt was an abundance of caution that we better come in and apply for another condition. Well, I think you could apply for it anyway, because that way we approved, if we approved the fact we do that. But that's, that's regardless.
The, the only comment I would make is because you've kindly availed yourself to us out of an abundance of caution, my position would probably be if you take that down, and you're taking it down, and it's not till next year or maybe even longer, depending a lot on these gas prices and everything else, that you're putting it back up. I would say that my opinion would be you come back and we go through it again.
We can do that.
That's, that's, that would be my opinion.
I, I disagree with your opinion, but we could do that.
If you're going to avail yourself to us, then I think, I think if you take it down and put it back up, we can, it'll give the board, it'll give this, this commission the opportunity to see how it works. Maybe it's no problem and it's, you know, it's no issue, and if there's issues, then they can address it again at that point. I think, I think that would be fair, that would be my, that would be my one comment.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying too, and I understand what I'm asking.
Of course.
I think just keep us fresh and up to what you're doing.
And, and, I mean, Kelly, you know, we can come back anytime and give you guys operational updates too, if you're interested in that. So, or we can, with John or whatever you need.
So everybody wants to see that, they can.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, permission, they'll take you up, I mean, I've gone to some of their sites. But I know that they're very.
We welcome that.
You're part of it?
We welcome that.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, do we have any other questions, comments or concerns? No? Okay, I need a motion to allow us to go forward. I shouldn't be.
Recommend, what?
Recommendation motion.
It's a motion to recommend the approval subject to whatever issue you have conditional on. If you recommend it.
I don't know, we've got any conditions or what have you. Do we have any that you're interested in, John?
I'll have to come back in some time. Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, you need to come back. I apologize, you're right. Okay.
Russell for Manic.
Sorry. Well, I have another question.
Yeah.
How long does it take to assemble that and disassemble before the operation?
An AST.
And then after this.
A couple of days.
Wait, I have, I have one other question that I would, I would put on record. It is not, you're, based on my comment, that, that you guys would come back and your willingness to do that, it is, it is not going to be your intention just to leave that up permanently, right? You're still going to.
No, no, we would, we would take it down regardless. We have to pay a rental fee now on that, so, you know, we wouldn't, right? We financially wouldn't make that.
They were talking, it's only a matter of a couple of months, is it a rental match?
Yes, just during the frac.
My point was, I, I didn't want them, because I said they have to come back. I didn't want them just to leave it up and say, okay, we're not coming back.
Is the set company doing the AST and the pipeline?
No.
And who's going to be doing the pipeline?
Oh, off the top of my head, I don't know. I don't deal with our contractors that much, except to make sure that they're being seen. Yes.
Russell for Manic, 325 High Street, Lisbon. I just wanted to say, I guess I'm in favor of this, simply so that we can get the fracking going, get these wells completed, because that's when we're going to start getting the benefits. A lot of money handed out through the impact fees, like four township got over a quarter million dollars, I think. But that's only after you get the wells completed. Now, there was a pretty good plan for keeping a lot of trucks off the road, but our protect, people that want to protect us decided they like to mess that up, so they're trying to warm it up. But this at least keeps some of the trucks off the road, or at least part of the roads. So I think that's a good idea to approve this, get these wells fracked and move on. Because I'm not a legal expert, but I suspect if they really wanted to, they could just truck all of their water to each of the sites, you know, for every well and make it a worst-case scenario for the people. But I think this is a better plan in favor of it. Thank you. But I think this is a better plan and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Um, since there was only one, is there anyone else interested in signing up at this time?
I, I have a question about that. No, I had a question for you about how, because if we're making comment on this use application, does that mean that anything else that you go through on the agenda, we won't be able to make sense?
We'll give you a comment after that.
Right.
Like, if something comes, okay, okay.
But we just wanted to get, these people don't need to say they have one. So, we're just trying to expedite, expedite. So, if anyone else wants to talk, you must sign up first.
Um, okay, real quick, um, first, as far as Galene is concerned, Dave, I think you're right. Um, as far as how it was approved versus how it's being asked for now. Um, the other thing is, as far as, um, the pump station is concerned, I guess it's Galene pump station, um, there's issues. I know you asked what issues there were, so National Park Service has an issue, uh, DCNR has an issue, um, and it was under appeal because it's public park. Um, there were certain steps that needed to be taken that weren't taken. Um, the other part is, um, the only other question that I had on all of this was if the township currently has an agreed-upon roadway maintenance agreement yet?
Repeat the last part.
A roadway maintenance agreement, if we have an approved roadway.
You have to ask Brian, Brian's on it, Brian's the one who wanted to ask.
Yeah, I believe that it, where there's truck traffic of any kind or...
No, 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 there's, there's approved routes, and then there's the roadway maintenance agreement.
Yes, I think there is, you have to talk with Brian, I think he's, he's feeling.
Okay, 'cause last time, yeah, 'cause last time I filed the right to know, there wasn't one.
Yeah, yeah, I, but I think we did.
Okay, all right.
We just put them, they're bonded, follow up everything, wherever, where they're...
Yeah, but they have to have a signed agreement with the municipality according to our ordinance, per roadway maintenance, so.
Megan, if I could ask you a question, how would you obtain all that information?
Obtain which information?
Anything you just told us.
For National Park Service and all of that, I have filed the right to knows since I heard about the appeal. With DCNR, you can file it with DCNR, National Park Service.
You personally, though?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I got some from the municipality today as far as DCNR is concerned too.
If, if I could, so it's clear that National Park Service approval, as well any court approval, goes back to the ones the township is applying for, because they are the owner.
Correct. Okay, now, is there anyone else who was...
Larry, Coach.
Boston Hall Road, they'd invite you to come down and see what's going on on that street in the future. But I talked to John today, I was shocked to see, and you guys come through pretty fast. Why this thing was on hold? Why is it not being approved by the DDP? And now you come back and say, well, we thought we had approval, I thought you had approval, and this man's saying, where, where's the, the shouting and going on? So, where, where, the timeframe now to start fracking is now, is it involved or not? Are you still on schedule? Would be temporary, I wanna call swimming pools you're putting on. And my basic question is, has those, let's say, backup temporary, have they been sized? What's the capacity of those tanks?
We have that information.
Well, I don't have the information, and it's a problem to sit in here and you have information. But if that's been done, that's, that's wonderful.
She did testify to the size, and then she said that...
I'm right here.
It's a hundred ninety feet, a hundred ninety feet in diameter, twelve feet tall.
That's the big one. If the smaller ones, the same size, or they overlap?
The ASTs.
They're smaller, have they been sized?
They're the same size.
Same size, and I thought you said the DDP's questioning that size?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, is it possible that all three of these could be on these pads at one time?
Yeah.
So, you're getting ready to come up with Galene, which I thought that was approved. That's a shock to me, because I sat here and listened to some of the things that you guys did, and it was all moving forward. And all of a sudden, I see this agenda, and it's like you're back trying to come up with a secondary plan quickly. And I think it sounds like it's short time, but if the Galene gets approved, or it doesn't, the question was asked, is this thing going on with the temporary, temporary ones? And you forget, forget about Galene. Of course, Galene, you're saying it's being constructed, but it's not approved.
It's approved.
So, you're constructed, constructed, but you're, are you ever gonna pump from Galene to these temporary things?
So, if Galene's approved, Galene will get pumped to CTO, just like the original plan.
So, you have to have that system approved.
Look, Larry, I'll try and break it down for you. This is, this is Plan B, okay? Plan A was in place, Plan A is getting held up in the courts.
Why? Stop right there, why?
Because there's been challenges to the different approvals, Megan just spoke to him. So, there's, there's the National Park Service, because the property where Galene was being built was acquired by grant funding. There were requirements that had to happen, okay, other than the township approval. So, it's been approved, but the, the process hasn't been finalized, okay? So, basically, Plan A is happening, but it's on hold right now, while it's going through the court system. So, this is the alternative, this is Plan B to say, hey, look, we're trying, they're trying to avoid the truck traffic. This is their Plan B to avoid truck traffic.
Gotcha, but you're never gonna plot, you're never gonna cancel the truck traffic.
No, no, not on the bit, I mean, you're, you're never gonna eliminate truck traffic with the gas, as, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, but, but, the point is, you, if, if, can the approval come tomorrow? How long before Galene says, go, the tank?
Could it come, could it come in September, October, November? I, I don't know, you know?
So, so the temporary, the temporary ones are gonna prove tonight to get moving on those. So, you have two systems being designed, or going to be rented almost at the same time.
Yeah, I'm not the person to talk to this, but the way, the way I would understand it from dealing with other municipalities and how I guess, these guys are on, they're on a schedule, right? They have a schedule based on construction, and what it costs them on a daily basis to construct and run these things. So, my understanding would be, they're, they're, they wanna stick to that schedule, because time is money, just like anything, right? And so, when that got held up in the courts, they're trying to get a Plan B in place quickly, because they don't wanna push the schedule, because I would think, from their business perspective, pushing the schedule's gonna cost them money, right? So, this is, this is what they're, this is what they've come up with, to try to keep themselves on schedule, I imagine. Yeah, that's not me, you have to talk to them, that would be my understanding.
Well, this happened before, and it seems like you already went through the approval process, and it was just a shock that you had it. You had to get it approved.
Approval was not, it's, it's held up by other agencies.
Okay, tonight are you gonna approve them on a temporary, is that the end of it, they're gonna go, still going this?
It still has, this is conditional use, it still has to go.
Go back to commission, okay, thanks, and, and, that's the last time, I'm wishing you luck, okay? Because I think you gotta keep it tight.
Thank you. Um, could I ask, I just, I just write down, okay, the places that we don't have approval, or the National Park Service, what were the other ones? I'm, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll, I'll be talking afterwards, don't tie up.
All right. Now that we have the citizens speak, and we've discussed it among ourselves, um, now we need a vote, a motion, and have this go forward to the commissioners. I need a motion.
I think, Kathy, I think we should add a condition that those tanks, uh, have to be there under some sort of timeframe. My, my concern is that they're just gonna leave them there and continue to use them, and possibly ban the tank station.
Okay, so, I mean, I know, I know, I thought about that shit.
I know, everybody else thinks about that.
I understand, but it's, yeah, I understand.
She said it takes a couple days, the, when the other paramount, maybe thirty days prior, fracking thirty days after.
Would that be acceptable, we do say thirty, so, total sixty days, would that be acceptable?
You mean thirty days after we're, after we're finished fracking at Plutus?
Would that be in a timeline?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think that's un, un...
I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
Right, and I agree with what Mark said, because that is my concern, even though you do pay rent on it, that you may wanna continue keeping them up, even after CTO pegs up, and I, I, I agree, I, I, that does make me a little concerned about that. So, I agree with Mark, I think that would be a good thing, good in place. Is there anything else?
Just to have that condition, not having to reapply the next time?
Oh, about the reapplication, would that be?
I don't think I have to be in condition, but I can, I'll, I can, if I, I can ask my lady, even though that's gonna be our lady.
Is there anything else, anyone would like to have a minute? All right, in a motion at this point then?
Motion.
David, uh, second, Dan, Paul and Baby, say aye please, aye, okay. None, thank you, thank you, correct. All right, uh, on to the next business. All right, next is, uh, ordinances, uh, we have, and we're doing zoning ordinances, both for the Lisbon Township as well as zoning ordinance, we have some that fit with one another. So, we have John and Matt kind of come up with some of them, they have come up with a few. So, follow at master's one.
Yeah, so John and I, John and I met, and we went through the current zoning ordinance, as I hope you guys have been reviewing, and we tried to look at areas where John needed some help in tightening up different things based on what he's been experiencing, uh, for code enforcement. We've come up with, uh, a total of five different areas, so, we, at some point in the future here, we are going to be putting together an amendment to the zoning ordinance, so, because of the procedure that's necessary with that, with having a public hearing, and the advertisement, and the cost, it's best that if we can, to put that all in one ordinance, that way we're only paying who wants to do it. So, what we really want, the five areas that we came up with, first of all, that we're gonna recommend, and then, I'll go through those, if you guys have additional areas, or if you wanna come back with additional areas, however you wanna deal with this, come back with that, and then I can put the ord, the ordinance together, which is, then you can recommend, um, to go through the process, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so, the areas John and I came up with were, number one, areas, um, including the setbacks for accessory structures, um, that we, we pretty much need to address specific items as well as a catch-all, right, John?
Yeah, we've, uh, currently addressed specific items as swimming pool, uh, handicap garage, accessory storage structure. We have no catch-all for...
So, you have like a finite list of things, and there's obviously other items which people need to put up, which will be considered accessory structures, and, and he doesn't know exactly how to deal with that, so, um, like gazebos and playground equipment, things like that, so, um, so I think our recommendation is, I can come up with some language to at least give us a catch-all on accessory structure, that way. It'll conform, our recommendation is to keep it within the same setbacks that he's currently dealing with, just kinda have a catch-all there, just so he can say it falls under this category. Um, number two, I think we want, we do wanna revisit residential solar, uh, at least the residential end of that. I think there was a desire a few months ago from, from some members on the commission to address that, so we do wanna get that into place at a minimum. Uh, number three, to look at the definition of a structure itself, because our definition right now is extremely broad. It's like, yeah, it seriously is like, anything that is a mass, yeah, you can grade it, but it's pretty broad.
Any, any man-made object having an ascertainable stationary location on or in land or water, whether or not fixed to the land, so, pretty much anything man-made.
So, you can argue, I'm saying arguably, someone could have a, um, a birdbath, or a statue, or something, and, and the neighbor could have it, just do, say, hey, you need to get a permit for that, that's a structure. So, I, I think we don't wanna, I, I think we need to limit that a little bit.
Yeah, I'm supposed to work with the literal terms here.
Yeah, yeah, so that makes it very difficult, when basically, anything that exists that's a fixed to, or not a fixed to land, is a structure. I mean, that's, you know, that's pretty tough, that's pretty tough for him, if somebody wants to really dig in. I mean, I know, I know you probably don't deal with that a lot, because most people are reasonable, but, you know, if someone really starts digging in there, that could be, that's a potential, uh, landline there. Um, number four was, um, dealing with non-impact home-based businesses. And so, we, we have this issue where, um, people are, like, let's say they run a landscape business, or something like that, plumbing business, and they're, it's a non-impact business, because they're not having people come to their house, there's no traffic, they're not really running it up, but they're storing, like, in their garage, or in their driveway, a plumbing van, or, you know, a, a, a truck, a pickup truck for landscaping. Theoretically, as it stands now, that could be violative of the ordinance. And I know that John has said, I mean, I know just from living there, driving around, there's a lot of people that have their work vehicles in their driveways, and I think that, I don't think it's necessarily a problem, especially in a non-impact business. So, if you have, if you have an impact business, obviously that could be a problem, you know, a lot of people storing, um, bulldozers and trucks and trailers.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, talk to that guy, Tom, yeah.
I was gonna say.
But, but I think we wanna clean that up, just to make sure that there's no issue, if you have non-impact home-based business, that your, your truck associated with that, or van associated with that, isn't gonna be a problem, because it's all in the driveway. Um, and then the last thing that we came up with was, um, this is not really in the zoning ordinance, this is probably dealing with other ordinances, but, um, sidewalks, driveways, and, and, and making handicap accessibility ramps. And right now, we don't have any, um...
No standalone zoning, doesn't touch on it. And if the zoning is considered a structure, and I have one coming for zoning.
We don't have specs, yeah. So, really, really the way the question worked in most municipalities, and I was surprised when John and I went through, it wasn't in there, because we have a, we have an ordinance designation for sidewalks, there's nothing in there for sidewalk. Like, normally you would do it similar to the way you deal with the street, which is, here's, here is what you have to use, it has to be this type of concrete for this depth and whatever, and then basically our engineer codes and specs it, make sure it meets the specs, and then it's all good, so you come in, you get, apply for a permit.
Where, what sidewalks you referring to, your sidewalks down to your house?
Sidewalks, if you're replacing in front of your house, typically. Luckily, we may, not that we have many sidewalks in the township, but we don't address a lot of that, like, you know, specifically, we have a lot. We're dealing with rampways, handicap ramps.
Well, I think we have ramps to cover under ADA.
Well, yeah, and they're up in certain, you know, are also covered under, yeah, but that's for public buildings. But we're, we're talking about residential.
Probably for commercials, yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about residential.
And Mark, one of the issues we're having...
Cover residential ones, not this type of stuff for ADA, I mean...
You could deal with construction and things like, absolutely.
If you, if you force a rep, every new home voter into an ADA requirement...
No, 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 that's all we're saying, we're saying if you want people to want to...
The problem that came up is somebody, and a lot of times, it's, you know, I don't plan next week for the halfback to be in a wheelchair. Um, they have a family member, they lost mobility, they need an accessible ramp that reaches through their required front yard for zoning, and zoning is a structure, you can't have it in the required front yard. So, they have to now get a variance to try and get the accessibility. We're trying to... Yeah, to, to, to put a, a spec on the actual construction, I think that's reaching. I mean, to tell a guy, you know, he's got good equipment, you know, four and three, four sidewalk with expansion, going every ten feet, you know, twenty feet wide to do this, I think that's, personally, I think it's quite a crowd.
Maybe, maybe it would, because, doesn't it have to be a certain...
That's under ADA, the ADA has a certain slope, it has certain requirements, that's what we're saying, but that's, that's, that would not help you with a residential person that wants to put it in, that's what the...
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, that's definitely...
I mean, what do you think, they, they should just be able to put in whatever? Like, if they wanna put in a, you know, they want to put in whatever, just, that is, just let them put it in?
You mean for, for this disabled person, or something like that?
Like, let's say, let's say I live, let's say I live in a, let's say I live off of Fox Run, and, um, you know, I, where, where I used to live, I had a little porch with, with two-step down, and I just wanna put in a ramp in my front yard, all the way to the street, so that I can bring my mother in and wheel her right up to my, my house. We don't, we don't, we shouldn't have a permit.
Some of that is a function of the capability of a person actually to terror, I mean, they're, they're not gonna, they're not gonna wheel themselves up on one forty-five degree ramp, you know what I'm saying?
But that's what I'm saying, what if I build one of these hogs?
What if you put them restrictions on there, and they don't have, they don't have the, the land, or...
Can't right now.
They, they don't have the, the dimensions to do that, what are you gonna do then?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure we deal with slope, or we deal with, uh, location, or we deal with... I'm just saying, these are things that John and I, like, this is why we have to have this discussion, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not there.
I, I'm not saying I necessarily have a problem with it, but, but what ends up happening is somebody comes in and puts something that looks hideous, is, is made out of street signs, and looks terrible, and the neighbor says, wow, how'd you let that happen? We don't, we don't have any zoning for it, you know what I'm saying? If, if the normal person, it's not a...